All right, well, why don't we get started? Everybody knows Derek, our Ward Eight Alderman. Of course, he does a great job for the city. And we have Laura Tilerski and Lotham and Japudi, who are our state reps, working hard up in Concord. Lori Wilshire is the president of the Board of Aldermen. Thank you, Lori. So what I usually do, and well, thank you all for coming, because I really, we all enjoy getting your input, finding out what you're thinking about, what you hope for, and what you'd like us to be working on, what your priorities are. And Jack Courier is from the ZBA, longtime member. And Paul Patty, actually from Ward Eight, is, we have a rail commission in the city, and that's become another issue, an issue again.
Jack's our ward clerk as well.
Anyway, thank you all for coming. So what I usually do is tell you a little bit about what's going on in the city, maybe in the neighborhood, and then really take questions and comments from you. This has been, you know, the last few years have been trying because of COVID, but our public health department has done a very good job in taking aggressive steps to protect public health. But now, after, you know, some time has gone by, we're able to get together again in person, and we're all glad about that. Actually, the State of the City address I gave last night, that's the first time I've done that live in person in three years. It's been remote, so that was really nice. I believe the city is on a really good course. We have been recognized in a number of ways for a number of good qualities. We have been called the fourth-best-run city in the United States. This is due to a comparison of the quality of the city services, which are high, versus against the cost per person, which is very modest, at least compared with other cities. And therefore, what that measurement, what that recognition is saying is that the city is effective and efficient in our city operations. And we could talk about a number of ways that we've tried to, and we have successfully saved money for our taxpayers. Will Darby in the back there is a state rep, new, this is his first term. We've been recognized as the second-safest city in the United States. Our priority is to make the city even safer, but that is due, of course, to high-quality police and fire departments, great leadership in both those departments, Chief Rourke and Chief Buxton. We have done a lot to help them do the job as effectively as they can. But we are down some police officers, so we're trying to fill that gap across the nation. Police officers, police departments are having trouble filling their ranks. So we are working on some new steps, such as for the first time recently, hiring police officers from other smaller departments, which Nashville PD did not do for a long time. But we have a well-paid and, we think, well-run department. Some other things that are happening in the city, you might want to talk about the development over here, the proposed development, that really nothing, nothing is really happening, but the Flatley Development. Matt Sullivan is the Community Development Director for the city, and he can talk about that in great detail. But there have been discussions going on for years about this. I remember coming here, right here, and the room was full with people who were concerned about what was going to happen at that time. And that must have been either 2019 or very early in 2020, 2019 probably. Nothing, you know, there've been a few little things going on over there, but basically the city and the Flatley Company are in disagreement on a number of issues. We're looking for various things. We want, if there's going to be development, we're looking for a development plan. We want to know long-term what's going to happen or what is being proposed. Number two, if, the Flatley Company is very interested in housing. City has passed an inclusionary zoning ordinance requiring that, in this area, that 20% of any new units be affordable. And that is something that the Flatley Company is, has reservations about, let's put it that way. So there's no agreement there. There are some traffic improvements we're looking for. So things just, discussions just go on and on and on. Matt's been very involved with that, but really, nothing much has happened in the last several years. They did do some flex workspace over there. You see, I don't know if you've been to Spyglass Brewery, have you seen that? Has anybody been there for Spyglass Brewery? So there's a brewery moved from Amherst Street to a, what they call a flex building up in Terra Heights there, and this is like incredibly popular. You go there on a weekend, there's 150, 200 people there. And this is a locally-generated business. These, John Wagner and three other partners formed this company, this brewery, several years ago. They're all former tech people. I think Wagner lives in, doesn't he live in Ward Eight? I think he does. Anyway, I think he lives here in the south, either eight or nine, somewhere here in the south end. And he is like an artist, so he's attracted this entire brew culture from all over the place, you know, out of state, all across New Hampshire. So that's been kind of interesting. As you know, we are building a new middle school, the Brian McCarthy Middle School, a tribute to Brian McCarthy, who worked very hard over a long time in behalf of our schools. That will be opened in the fall of 2024. And the reason I mention that is it will, probably, they are doing, the school department is in charge and is doing redistricting, but probably, given your location, children from bicentennial here will most likely go to that school. And I know for a fact what they're doing is trying to hold the schools together, meaning everybody from any one elementary school will go to the same junior, to the same middle school. That, of course, is a good thing, because the school facility you'll find is going to be a really excellent one. Pennachuck is being renovated right now. This is, of course, middle schools across the city. Pennachuck is being renovated right now. Fairgrounds was already done. If you go there, the teachers and the staff are just ecstatic about the improvement in the school environment. So we're really trying to do across the city a middle school upgrade. Other things that I know you've been affected by, the revaluation, which was a state-mandated, state-ordered thing. We were required to do that by state law. And the problem that it caused was that the difference in the amount that the home values, home values went up 41% since the last revaluation, but commercial properties, malls, industrial properties, offices, did not go up nearly as much. And in fact, some of these commercial properties actually went down. So take Pheasant Lane Mall, biggest taxpayer in the city. They were assessed at $150 million. Now, the, as a result of the fact that mall values have actually come down, they're now assessed at $130 million. So they didn't go up 40%, they actually came down 15. And there's going to be 15%, $20 million, and there will be litigation with them, because they're claiming that their value went down $50 million to $100 million. So a revaluation does not collect more money. It allocates, and this is state law, taxes between property, among property owners, based on fair market value. So the homes went up so much, commercial property did not. So before the revaluation, homes were about 65% of the entire tax base, meaning the values in the city. They paid 65% of, we paid 65% of the taxes. After the revaluation, homes are closer to 70% of the entire value of the city, meaning now homes pay almost 70% of the taxes. And that reallocation, and commercial property, instead of paying 35, is closer to 30. So that reallocation has driven people's property taxes up. And we know, for people on fixed incomes especially, this has worked a real hardship. So we are expanding the so-called elderly exemption, which already is the best in New Hampshire, but we are raising that to try to help people who would be affected by this revaluation and have trouble staying in their homes. Now, one thing that is, before I conclude, I will mention that rail service, we're still working hard on that, that the executive council took the step of canceling the, on a three-to-two vote, with our, the council representing Nashville actually leading the charge to stop the project. So they took a vote to prevent, to stop the work that was going on in terms of the final planning phase of the Capitol Corridor rail project. The project was, the work was already 75% done using entirely federal money. So we are working with Manchester to see if we can generate a more local approach to getting this, the final planning phase completed. There is unprecedented amount of federal money available at the, federal money available for rail, passenger rail projects. And as, when I went to a meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors a month or so ago, I mean, there's projects all over, all over the United States that are being pushed by cities and states with bipartisan support. Utah and Idaho are working on a north-south project. There are projects in Texas, Virginia, they're all over the place. And so it is hard to understand why in New Hampshire, this idea of expanding passenger rail, helping us with greenhouse gases, getting people off the road, and using what in fact is the largest rail network in the world, the United States has that, using that for beneficial purpose just seems crazy. So Lotham was just telling me that CSX, a large company that bought all of the rail lines in New Hampshire recently, from the former owner Pan Am, that they're interested in trying to promote and see passenger rail come into New Hampshire. So we may someday have some good news, but, you know, it's still up in the air. So why don't I turn it over to you, so you can ask whatever questions you'd like, make any points. This is Jenny. She's going to give you a microphone, so you'll be heard and on record and everything.
I'm John Weber.
Hi.
I'm interested in mass transit, and for a long time, I've liked the idea of rail car, but I've been watching some YouTube experts on mass transit, and the new mantra seems to be trains bad, buses good. The reason being that if you like low emission, there are now electric buses, which people seem to be in love with. I have my reservations, but, so my question is, when you're looking at the rail, have you looked at a trade between going rail and adding frequent bus service to other railheads like to Lowell or those places? Because buses will get people off the road soon. The advantage of buses is, well, the disadvantage is, when the roads are bad, they don't run very well. But the infrastructure and the cost of maintenance is a lot lower. So I'd like to know if the rail studies will look at the trade between trains and buses.
Well, certainly, you are correct that, I mean, we're not trying to, we're trying to expand the options and the choices. So right now, there is, there are the Boston Express buses going from...
We use those, they go to the airport and any other bus stations.
And you do, you still are in the traffic. I mean, how regular, now, I hear, I don't use that or go to that, use those very often going to Boston, but is it, do you, are you always on time, or is there variance?
We only use them to the airport, but the expansion we're talking about is for commuters.
Right.
The bus service here is, you can't commute by bus. So what I'm saying is, for a mass transit commuter option, I mean, it would require a massive influx of money, but I suggest that you may be able to buy a lot more bus service than rail service, and there may be federal money available for that, too.
All right, well, certainly, the bus service is something that is a good complement as well, but there is commuter bus service. So the Boston Express goes to South Station several times every morning and comes back at night. And there are definitely people using that, so there's no question about that. I mean, the state supports that, there's no question about it. The opposition has come to, you know, the rail service.
Thank you. Excuse me. My name's Roger Wiseman, and I would be interested if you would update us on what the city's done and doing about our higher electrical cost.
Good, good point. So electric costs, as you know, have gone through the roof, basically, basically doubling in price. Eversource's rate, I now, I believe, is now 20.6 cents per kilowatt, before it was closer to 10. So the city has been working on this for some years. Lori Wilshire has been very involved. We have, are embarking on something which is called community power. So what the legislature authorized several sessions ago was the ability of cities, towns, or groups of cities and towns to purchase power, to supply to Eversource customers, and to do so potentially at a lower rate than Eversource. So when you look at your electric bill, you see, the biggest line on there is electric charge, and that is what you pay for the power that comes into the house. There are a number of other lines on there for distribution and other things that Eversource is allowed to charge for. So once community power kicks in, Eversource will continue to bill you, Eversource will continue to be paid for distribution, but the line for the electric charge, that line will go to the, will be directed by Eversource to community power. So what we have done is we've, for several years, have been working with 16 other cities and towns, Hanover, Lebanon, Dover, Exeter, Chesapeake County, in the organization called New Hampshire Community Power. And now have gotten to the point where we can launch with most of, or many of, these communities. And they almost, they almost went out and bought power two days ago, but there were some things that weren't ready, and so we couldn't do it. But probably within the next month or so, this community power organization here, called Nashville Community Power, will go out into the market and bid for power. And there are experts involved, there's people, you know, there's an organization called Ascend that is doing this for other communities throughout the country, Massachusetts, California, and elsewhere. And Calpine is a banking organization, which is kind of going to be the, kind of the back of the house. They believe that if they go out now, they're going to save, you know, significant amount of money off the Eversource price. And our goal is to save you money by buying the power at a cheaper price, in a sort of, with a different sort of approach than Eversource uses, thereby reducing electric bills. The other, but anyone who wants, the switch will be automatic, you won't see anything, you'll just, you know, be, you won't really notice it. But you will move, you will move into this new system automatically. But if anybody likes, wants to stay with Eversource, they always have the freedom to go back to Eversource. The other thing that this will offer is that Nashville customers will be allowed, enabled, to buy green power. And now that will charge, that will cost more, but I think the Eversource, there is a certain percentage of green power that Eversource must include by PUC directive, must include in its power mix. But there will, I think, be three options available. You will be able to opt for 33% green power, 50% or 100%. Now, green power will cost more, but, and you don't have to take that, but if you want green power, you can pay for it in that manner. Now, is that, I mean, it's something new. I don't know if I've explained it real clearly, but, so if there are other questions, I'd be glad to...
Also with that, Mr. Mayor, if you're currently on a different supplier than Eversource currently...
It won't change. You would have to opt to go to Nashville Community Power. So if you have a cheaper price now with another supplier, you will automatically get switched over like you will if you have Eversource.
Well, it's for that.
So how do you get notified? I'm on another source. How will I be notified to see if it's cheaper then? I have direct energy for my source now.
Well, you're going to have to watch. I don't know if you would get notified. I, we, I mean, we have to, I'm not sure whether you would receive notice.
What's the timeframe?
Well, it almost started, if we had been able to go out Tuesday, the National Community Power would have begun on April 1. But there's still more details, you know, that are being worked out by these providers. So probably, you know, May-June timeframe?
So if I may, just, I've been attending the Energy and Environment Committees meetings. We will all be notified, even if, before you, before the switch happens, you'll be notified, because you'll have the choice, if you want, to stay on...
And what, is it going to be by mail?
By mail, yes.
All right.
And you'll also be notified of the price, right? Like, so I'm on a competitive provider right now, and you'll be notified, like, this is what the price would be, and then you can, you can opt in if you're on a competitive provider, you can opt out if you're on PSNH.
So Will is on one of the committees that has been working on this, so apparently there will be a mail notification.
But only if you're on Eversource.
No, everyone, right? Everyone.
Because they have a distribution.
Everyone will be notified by mail.
Does the billing, yes. Does the billing and the distribution.
Yes, Lotham.
Two questions. One is to answer about the rail, and I think more multimodal. Nashville is more equipped better to do both bus, train, and other modes, right? So multimodal transportation, and aren't you looking at that as a multimodal, so bring the rail and then connect it within the city with the buses, so we use less of a car? That's the transportation. Second one is the energy one. We also have hydro, the city-owned hydro. So adding more renewable energy in terms of solar on all the public, as well as 125% of generating individual location, adding that additional, isn't that something that Nashville is looking at to harvest all the excess energy? Example, if I, in my home, I can provide or generate 125% of my need, 25% can go to my neighbor, that net metering, group net metering stuff. So there's a lot of other options that, you know, Nashville is taking a great lead in kind of doing that the right way. So, you know, I applaud Mayor for that.
Thank you. So we do have, we have green goals, 25% reduction from a base year by 2025. We're well on the way to achieving that. We have switched to CNG-powered garbage trucks. We use hybrid buses, so we've cut the fuel emissions, the emissions from the public works vehicles and the transit vehicles together by 40%. There are a number of buildings with solar power on them. All these new middle schools will be solar-powered completely for electricity needs. We have solar power on Lake Street Fire Station, the Transit Garage, Dr. Chris Ghoul, and we're looking at various other alternatives in terms of solar power. We do have the two dams, Mine Falls and Jackson Falls, which together generate, you know, over 10 million kilowatts a year. One is a 3 megawatt, one is a 1 megawatt facility. So we are looking at all ways to try to reduce the carbon footprint of the city. We just did work on the police station, which should make it a much, that's one of the biggest energy users, certainly outside the school department, that is the biggest energy user. We are, in terms of buildings, we are, we just did a project to improve the HVAC and the windows and everything to increase the efficiency there. So we're looking at every way we can to reduce use of energy and save money, and also reduce the carbon footprint.
I have a question about the EV charging stations, because we are a big EV desert when it comes to. So what's your plan for EV charging stations across Nashville?
Now, we have some in the Elm Street parking garage, but I'll let Matt, Matt's working on that, so I'll let Matt...
Lotham, it's a great question. We are, we're working on an implementation plan right now for EV chargers, focusing primarily on the community core, where we expect that most of the demand, and we're currently seeing most of the usage happen. We recently submitted a grant to New Hampshire Department of Transportation to actually install just over 10 chargers in the downtown core. Unfortunately, one of the things that we're seeing a great struggle around right now, both at the federal level and at the state level, is some of the sort of Buy America standards related to chargers, so they want you to buy American-made equipment. And so unfortunately, we just heard recently that that grant application is going to be on hold until the state government can actually develop appropriate standards to grant monies to communities that want to install electrical vehicle charging stations. That said, they're committed to doing it, and they recognize there's a need. I would add in the fact that it's not just municipality looking at this, it's also companies like Provision Energy in the private market that are looking to install at places like Hanaford or any other shopping or retail or even residential environments where there may be private property. They're looking to do a much wider scale implementation, it's not limited by taxpayer dollars, obviously, but they're looking to do that in partnership with the city as well. So our approach is going to be focused in the downtown core initially. We're then going to start looking at other parking assets around the city, but it's going to be two chargers at a time in the infancy. Part of that is the investment involved in it. The other piece is that we expect the technology to change, you know, obviously exponentially over the coming years, and so we're going to be somewhat slow and deliberate with the tactics that we're using to actually purchase chargers, chargers and install them. But certainly, we are seeing the demand. Even tonight, I was seeing all the chargers at the Elm Street Garage were fully occupied. We know that the demand is there, certainly in the community core, so we're working on it.
Are you working with the, I think, GM as well as Ford? They're rolling out Level 2 chargers, and, you know...
Yeah.
That, that's a good way of getting, and they're pushing for the dealerships to place it in the community, like a host community.
Right.
So, you know, those, you know, leveraging those.
Absolutely. And I'll tell you, just weeks ago, our position was a bit different. We wanted to try to seek the grant money to do it sort of as a municipality. Now that that opportunity is not as readily available to us, I think we're going to be looking to private partners to at least explore installation on private property in strategic areas. But again, we'll be exploring the municipal options as well moving forward. It's a great question.
I got a comment on that. There really are two kinds of chargers. That's the issue. It's like in the garage down Elm Street, that's overnight stuff, that's what they're there for. The ones that are out, those same chargers sitting down in Tingsboro there, they're never used, because those are not good in the daytime, because you can't get any use out of it by using it in the daytime. So you got to have the right chargers in the right place, and that's what's... And that's what's wrong now. They're putting the wrong chargers in all over the place.
Right. Yes, yeah, you have to have.
People don't realize that. There's a big difference between you, an hour, gain 100 miles or something like that versus an hour, get, get 10 miles. I mean, those are, that's what you have to look at. So it's like any other engineering thing. You gotta look at the end results.
Yeah.
They're not doing that.
I would say it's a.
I charge in my garage. I never charge out in the street unless I go on a trip.
Yeah.
We have two electric vehicles. I charge in the garage.
Yeah.
So who are the users?
Overnight.
Usually.
Yeah.
Folks who are working, folks who are working downtown, that drive an electrical vehicle to work and a parking.
So I, so I am.
Why, don't they have enough range? I mean, they have long ranges added.
There are three, three levels of chargers. Home one, Level 2 chargers that takes hybrid as well as electric vehicle or two, yeah. And fast charges, Level 3 chargers that can charge up to 80% in about 20 minutes or 30 minutes. So if you're tourists, you know, if you're coming, if you have a home, that's fine. But if the tourists are coming, there's a lot of demand for people who are coming to ski or.
Done marketing on this, so you know which ones to get.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's more about aligning, and this is not easy to do, but it's about aligning the type of charger based on the use where the charger is actually located and how long a person is expected to stay there.
Yeah.
Right. So, I mean, if you're, if you're, if you're, and one thing we've looked at is the city actually requiring chargers. We're not gonna require a, a slower charger in a location you're only expected to stay for 10 minutes, obviously. And so it's, it's about aligning those needs with, with the use itself.
So you already know what the needs are.
We, we have a sense, but it does vary in certain areas, right? Downtown's a great example, where you don't know if someone's there working for a full eight, eight-hour day. They're stopping to grab, you know, coffee and something at, at a business downtown. So you sort of have to offer a little bit of everything.
One of the things, like, people told me they didn't buy electric cars because they live in apartments or condos, and there's no place for them to charge. So I was wondering whether you were trying to meet that type of person.
Sorry. Are you gonna answer, but there was a bill?
Oh, no, go ahead, and I'll jump in.
There was a bill that was filed this year in the legislature that would establish a study committee to answer that very question as how we can provide charging facilities for renters. And I believe it was killed. It was killed?
Oh.
Yes. It won't move through the House.
If I can just answer the, in terms of, you know, the GM program, I'm very aware of that GM program. What they're telling the dealerships is put, you can get up to 10 chargers, Level 2 chargers, but we want you to work with the host location outside of your dealership. And put it like in an apartment or in a safe place, like high school, colleges, or hospitals, where you know people are going to be there. Or people who are working there, drive there, and they're there for a few hours. So that's Level 2 chargers. And the host location has to pay for the electricity. So what they're, you know, there's another way of doing it is to put solar panels to charge for the charging location chargers. That way, you're using renewable energy and also providing in this, you know, Level 2 chargers. That's two to three hours. It also helps with the hybrid, which is not totally, you know, combined electric as well as the gas, gasoline engine combined that can charge with that. So there are different varieties and different, and who gets to benefit from. But there's also good incentive, federal incentive now, to get solar or renewable energy that helps with this implementation. Yeah. Time is now to do that.
All right, now, yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Pat Rose, and I have a concern of safety right here on Bicentennial Drive that I would like to address.
Okay.
This morning, there was 12 cars parked right along Bicentennial Street. They have a sign that says, "No parking from here to the corner" because it's very narrow kind of road. Yesterday, there was 13 cars. I've kept track. A lot of times, there can be as many as 20 cars.
And this is down near East Dunstable?
Right outside here on the Bicentennial Road. My main concern is for a family with young kids, and I have been one leaving out at the time when school is going in, that would have two little kids and also be bringing one, I assume, to kindergarten with the door flung right open to the traffic coming this way. And to me, that's very scary. I would like to see it be a no parking. I'm up the street on Whitman, not far away, when this was all woods and there was no Bicentennial. And I would just like to make sure that it isn't a little child that pays the price for that.
Right. Well, that's a good point. So we do have parking enforcement. If you give Jenny your contact information, we'll get back to you about this and talk to them about enforcing what we have. Derek here can. Yes, good.
So I, I looked into it because I know I talked to, I believe, your husband, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So are they parking where they're not supposed to after that line? Or is it just that you don't want parking along that road at all at that place?
Right. It goes all the way from where you have already said because people coming around the corner wouldn't be able to get around the corner. So that is, is being taken care of. It's from there to the street, maybe Rose Cliff or whatever that is there.
So where there's technically allowed parking right now currently?
Where it is, but it's just bumper to bumper. I know, like I said, some of it is moms with little kids.
Yeah.
And others are teachers. Because I know some of the teachers that have done that. But easy access, like tonight, there's plenty of parking in the teacher's parking lot for office cars.
So I, I talked to Lauren Byers at DPW. And their response to that was, where would those people park? Because it would push them more into the neighborhood. So I said, you know, the parking lot probably has spaces. And, and I think the issue, and again, right or wrong, is the principal said, well, sometimes the teachers need to leave to a second job, and they can't get out because of the bus loop. So they park on the street, including the principal, sometimes. So he has easy access, like you said, easy access to get out. And because they don't want to be trapped in the parking lot, even though there may be spaces. So, yeah, I don't know what the right answer to that is. I mean, Lauren kind of squashed it as far as where are those cars gonna go? They're just gonna find other neighborhoods to park along. So, you know, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. So I'm not sure where, what to go, where to go next on that issue, but.
Okay. The other little part of that is also last week was the first time that I saw anyone take a tree, a rake, to the front yard. And they did take down eight trees right tonight where we're parked, like where your staff would park. But the rest of it's a disaster.
And this is what, on the school property?
On the school property. There are trees that are down limbs, that little wooden fence is half falling down. I know most moms today, unlike the old days, they, the kids all walk to school. They all drive them. But it, it, it's very sad that it looks that way.
I thought they picked up some. Did they not do that?
No, just in front, just in front. They did very, in fact, I rolled down my window. There was three gentlemen, and I came home and said to my hubby, "I bet it's someone's dad that is doing that." And he said, "No, Pat, there was a city truck with three men that did just the front." But the whole Bicentennial side is not, not very, you know, you want to be proud of the school and the neighborhood. It needs to be cleaned up.
So there were a lot of trees cut down, but not cleaned up?
Yeah, exactly, and leaves.
All right. Well, of course, school department sort of controls school department property, but we will be glad to speak with them about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say thank you to Derek. He is one excellent Ward 8 representative.
He sure is.
Yeah, he is right on at Gooden's Center, wherever, to let us all know. And we appreciate that.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate it.
So Derek, you know, he's new, but it's like he's been there for 10 years. You know what I mean? He knows everything. So, yeah, he's really good. All right.
Quick question, but probably not a very short answer. My name is Jane Weber, and I'm wondering about the current ideas that is of the closing Elm Street School.
So Elm Street will be, Elm Street will be abandoned once the McCarthy Middle School is opened. And so there have been a number of community input sessions with people from the neighborhood. Now, a lot of this had to be virtual because it occurred during COVID. But we're really continuing to take input. There was, recently, we have an art, when we have a consultant, an architect, sort of trying to put all the information together and come up with alternative plans. They held a, an input session just, I think, last week or two weeks ago. Now, the consensus that we have received, I think, the, the substance, the majority of it, is that people would like to see middle-density housing on that site. That's number one. That means not single-family homes, but not high rises, but something in between, probably 300 or so units, 300 to 400 units on that parcel. Number two, we are talking with Rivier University. Now, we, we believe that Rivier's future and the city's future sort of bound up together, that as Rivier does better, it helps the city. I mean, because they're a post-secondary educational institution. And they've been made, making a lot of progress recently. Sister Paula, who runs the, who's the president and runs the school, you know, they've built new buildings, the Science and Innovation Center. There's this thing called the Trotter Nursing Center. I mean, they've really made some big improvements. And they're beginning to attract, you know, students from many places. They believe that a hockey, a full-fledged varsity hockey program would help the school, help them attract students, raise their whole profile. So, and they have been working with a private company called Edge Sports, who is willing on that site, on a portion of that site, the Elm Street site, where the, where the portables are now. At least, it seems that Edge, this Edge Sports, which are, which has other hockey rinks around New England, is willing to come in and build two hockey rinks, which they will pay for, and operate them. Lease, leasing time to Rivier. This would give Rivier locker room space. They'd be able to have home games. They would really have home ice now. And lease the rest of the time to youth hockey and other organizations, the people who want to use it. That's a possibility. And then the third thing is the Keef Auditorium, which is something that we, we want to preserve. Now, the problem, you know, so we need to, so we're exploring all avenues as to how to try to pay for its, the ability, the city's ability to continue to keep it open and, in fact, improve it. Because in the end, all the building codes and fire codes and everything say that when the use of that building is changed and it is no longer a school, if you want to keep the Keef open, you have to do a lot of different improvements, which are needed anyway. But, for example, an entire HVAC system, a whole new thing, that's a lot of money. But while, if we're doing that, it makes sense to have new lobby bathrooms. I mean, you know, if you've been there, I mean, you obviously have been there. So, you know, it's, it's sorely deficient. So we're exploring alternatives to try to pay for those, those type of improvements and renovations, possibly making it a better facility. And, but that's not cheap. And so that's still kind of, we're in, we're still working on that.
But it might be integrated with one of those other, or multiple.
Yes. Yeah. So there could be multiple uses. Now, the aldermen have, you know, have heard about this. The Board of Aldermen just, will ultimately decide what to do. But the, the ideas that are sort of being discussed now are housing on three-quarters of the site, the Keef, and then on that south, southwest corner, the possibility of these ice rinks.
Thank you.
Yes, Jack.
Hi, I'm Jack Courier. I just wanted to say, I consider myself a high user of public transportation. And this is in regards to the rail discussion. But it's, it's been, public transportation, I think, has been way down since COVID. I think the bus service to Boston is excellent. It's a little less now than it was. We had bus service going to New York. I think that was excellent, but that COVID wiped that out. And, and I'm, I think I'm probably the only person in New Hampshire who takes it down Easter to go to the beach in Maine. I hope I'm wrong, but I think I am.
So now you go to Boston and then take it up? Or how, how do you get to Maine from?
Sure, I, I park at Havre.
Okay. Oh, I see. So you catch it partway up?
Yeah. Right, but it, it, it kind of takes a bit of creativity. I, I don't want to call myself creativity. And, and I, I don't see that happening a lot in this country. And as much as I think it would be great to have rail service to Boston, I'm just saying, my gut says, I don't think it's gonna get used much. And I hate to throw a wet blanket on that, but I'm, I'm just being candid with that. And I guess the other thing I wanted to say is my 21% plus tax increase, that hurts.
Yes.
You know, I've, I've, I've volunteered my time, you know, since I had a head of thick gray hair. I mean, I don't know what decade I started, but it's like, oh, my gosh, you know, my tax rate now, it's, it's not competitive to my friends in other New Hampshire and Massachusetts communities. So I just have to get it off my chest and let, you know, that hurts.
Well, I know it does. And the revalue, well, that first, the revaluation did that to a lot of people. Now, I mean, the underlying cause is that of, New Hampshire is the highest property tax state in the United States as a proportion of state spending. So if you examine every state and you say, okay, in terms of federal and local, I mean, excuse me, state and local dollars, raised and spent, not federal aid, state taxes, local taxes, how are those, how are those allocated in every state? Property taxes versus other state taxes. New Hampshire has the highest proportion of property taxes in the state of New Hampshire. And it is a system that, you know, really hurts homeowners, hurts people on fixed incomes, a very regressive tax, meaning people with limited assets and income pay a much higher proportion of their, their income on property taxes than someone who's got a million-dollar income. And so, you know, we are very aware of that. And we're, we have done many things to try to keep the taxes down. We've designed a new healthcare plan, which is saving 2.39 million dollars a year. We, we buying energy. We don't, we're not paying any 20 cents. I mean, we bought energy at 5.9 cents, but that won't go on forever. And we are, so we're trying in every way we can to save money. But in this year, the budget went up 4%. So it's not like this is driven by some, you know, 20% increase in the, in the state budget, in the city budget. The city budget went up 4% when inflation was six or eight, or whatever it was. And so we are always trying to save money. I often complain that the state is constantly pushing new costs on the cities and towns. This, we could get into the whole pension problem. We're paying to the state pension system $35 million a year. Nearly 15% of the money you, you pay in goes to the state pension system. And 75% of that money doesn't even have to do with current employees. They're building up their assets. So we are paying, they're building up the assets of the state pension system, which currently are, you know, 10 or 12 billion dollars. So the city and its taxpayers, you know, paying 25 million or so every year. And that's 10% of your taxes every year to add to the assets of the state pension system, which many people argue is not necessary at all. So we feel your pain, you know, and.
I would add to that, Mr. Mayor.
But I do. You, your service to the city, you know, we should give you, you know, like a free taxes, you know what I mean?
So, you know, as to what the mayor said, So, you know, as to what the mayor said, we are trying to do some things to help save money for some of our citizens where this tax rate went up, right? So elderly tax credit, we pushed that through to raise it to one of the highest in the state, I believe. I put legislation through for veterans to get their tax, it's not a credit, it's a stipend of some sort, to go to the max, which is 750. Now, other aldermen had it tabled, so it's still waiting to be done. Disabled credit, we've also put through two. So we're trying to find ways to save money for people in the city. The problem when you put those credits higher, it's got to take taxes from somewhere. So if you're saving money for veterans or the elderly, then it might be taken from someone that's not in those circumstances, right? You know, another great thing that the city's done, Doria Brown, our energy manager, she negotiated with EverSource for city business or a city, city hall, things like that, that the energy rate was five cents per kilowatt hour. So we are trying to find ways to save money so we don't have to raise those taxes up. And hopefully, you know, in this budget season, and I'm hoping the state reps can get us some money, maybe, maybe.
We had a good day today.
So I would, the 77% of the city budget is wages and benefits. So this is what, you know, the police, the firefighters, the teachers, we actually pay, I mean, and this is too bad, but, I mean, in terms of, I don't think it's really the right approach, but, you know, we need to keep taxes down. We pay less than the state average to teachers, $61,000. Now, before this teacher's contract that we just, that we signed a couple of years ago, but even that's, they're getting 4% raises. I mean, it's not like 20%, raises. So the one area, I mean, I get how difficult this is, but the one area that I would disagree is the idea that cities, towns around us pay lower. I totally think that's not correct. You go out to Hollis, you're paying much higher taxes and you're getting much less. You're not getting garbage, you don't get city water, you don't have city sewer. You pay for your, all that. You have a septic system, you know. Go to Brookline, any of the, Merrimack Hudson, they have higher taxes than we do. So, in fact, if you equalize the tax rates across the cities of New Hampshire, Nashua has the second lowest, and the only one that's lower is Portsmouth. Now, we used to be lower than Portsmouth, but their property values have gone up so much that, you know, they pay more, you know, the individual pays more in taxes because the house is worth a million dollars, or assessed at a million dollars, but they pay more in taxes, but their rate is lower. But putting all, putting the values aside, in terms of the equalized rates, we are the second lowest of all the cities in New Hampshire. So given the New Hampshire system of high property taxes, I'm saying, you get a good deal here. And that's why we're rated the fourth lowest, fourth best city run in the United States, because compared to what, you know, it costs, the services are very strong. But it doesn't help you pay the tax bill, yes.
One thing that's been conspicuously absent in this discussion on taxes is what are we doing to bring more businesses in? I mean, one of the reasons the private tax rates are going down is because one of our major business sources has been the retail businesses, places like Pheasant Lane Mall, and that's going away. So what are we doing? I mean, for example, the city's buying power cheaply. Is it possible, as an incentive, you could make cheap power available to people who move their businesses into the city? But that, what are we doing to bring new businesses to the city to hopefully employ people and pay taxes?
So we work hard with, we have an economic development department that's always working on that. A big constraint, though, is what the businesses that are already here will tell you. BAE, you know, now they have expanded down over here, and they pay higher taxes than they used to. They've put in a lot of manufacturing over there, growing. We can't find people. So that is a big, and that's what you hear, that's fidelity at BAE, there aren't enough people. We can't find the qualified applicants. So what?
I would challenge that. I'm retired from BAE, and they haven't called me back.
Well, I can't answer for them. I'm just, I'm just telling you what they tell.
I'm telling you, take it with a large grain of salt.
Well, I think that if you, I don't take it with a grain of salt. I think that they, I think they're telling us the truth. You hear it, you've talked to the chamber, they tell, you know, they hear that from all their members. Now, how do we help to solve the problem? More housing, because that is a big constraint, more affordable housing, and we could talk about what we're doing. Rail service. One thing that the rail service would do is it would enable people, now, the buses, it's a New Hampshire to Massachusetts service, that's it. You cannot get the bus on South Station and commute up here in the morning. You can commute from here down there and then in the evening come back.
How hard would it be to turn that, or that'd still be cheaper than railroad?
It may be, but that is under the state control. I mean, they, they run, you know, they deal with Boston Express. What the rail service could do is help to bring young people who still want to live in the urban area of Boston up here to work.
You could do it with buses?
Maybe. Yeah, well, I'm not disputing that. I, you know, maybe, possibly. Why not do it with both?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is just what I wanted to add on about. We use the Boston Express bus.
Yes.
But only to go to the airport, because to go casually to Boston, the bus doesn't run often enough. Of course, it's not cheap, but rail wouldn't be cheap either, understood. But to make it truly a commuter situation, you have to have it running at least once an hour, both directions, and then people would use it, then you'd get them out of Boston and the whole greater Boston area. Why not have bus service to Worcester and be able to integrate that community? It's got a lot to offer. I won't go into that because, but the other thing is in the interim, it was casually suggested earlier that we connect via bus to Lowell and the other stations on that line. Why not initiate buses, service?
Well, that is a good idea, and I should have acknowledged that, yes. I mean, I think we should look into that. But I did want to address one thing that Jack asked, which I didn't cover. You said, well, if we had rail service, it wouldn't be used. Now, this is an extensive, years-long analysis, and the state DOT tells us that in their view, they've plotted out several, three different scenarios. One is, you know, a very, no, not, no particular COVID impact, one is kind of a moderate COVID impact, and one is a very severe COVID impact. Using the middle-level scenario, they believe that the, there would be enough riders to pay, to, that the fares would be sufficient to make it a break-even system, once the capital costs are paid. The operations would be break-even. And they're optimistic that actually the thing could operate at a profit. So I think the, you know, were this capital corridor rail completed, there would be stops in Nashua, plus the airport, plus downtown Manchester. And they are, I'm going to say, confident that there would be enough riders, that the service would be a success.
I hope that's correct.
Now, we're going to take a couple more questions. Now, we try to finish in one hour. Derek has another meeting, and we want you to come back. So we don't, you know, an hour is about all that people can take. So, yes, sir.
I wanted to comment, a little, the microcosm, the little world that I live in here. I came to Nashua back in the early, in the mid-'60s, when Nashua was really functioning well, had a meeting with Royden, and Nashua at that time was world that they was known throughout the world for its technology. I came back here and moved in in 1979, been here 43 years, live over close to where Alderman lives.
My backyard.
In backyard, and there's 11 houses on the street. We look at the 11 houses on the street, we all had kids when we moved in, that kind of thing, there were 18 children at the time we moved in. We look now, those 18 children, guess how many went to college and that kind of thing? Guess how many stayed in Nashua for jobs? One, and he works at a landscape. That's the, you got to put, take your head out of the sand here. Nashua is no longer the city it once was. I left the brown, I haven't looked at, they knocked down a building I put together there in 1969, they put a two-story building in, on the Manchester Airport. They didn't build it in Nashua, they built it up there. So like I say, you got to take your head out of the sand here, and Nashua has changed. We can't continue to do the things we were doing before. That's why you're talking, the state hasn't changed anything, but Nashua has to change its outlook and what it does. It's not the same place anymore. Building more housing? Where are they going to go? The people can't, they don't have their jobs. When they go to high school, now they go to work as a waitress or something like that. You go into Texas Roadhouse, the men are becoming, are waiting on tables now. There are no jobs in this, in this area. Until you get the jobs back, forget building this housing down there. This Elm Street School, put a referendum on. You will find that the people overwhelmingly say, don't build any more housing. Take and consolidate all the city offices, you got a chance to do something there. You talk about the auditorium? Yeah, the reason it has to be redone is because government buildings are not required to meet any of the OSHA requirements. I guess people don't even know that. That's why, that's why you can't turn into civilian buildings.
All right, so one more question. Lori might have something. Now, I don't, I think we have, we have more tech jobs than we ever have in the past. I mean, BAE alone provides more, has more tech jobs, thousands of tech jobs, but, anyway, yes.
I have lived in Ward Eight for 16 and a half years, but I'm no longer in Ward Eight, I'm in Ward Nine. And I don't know why we were moved to Ward Nine. Oak Hill and Sky Meadow.
The federal law, you know, there's this principle of one man, one vote, is what it's called, so it really should be one person, one vote. But what it says is that representative districts need to be of equal size, or approximately equal size. So what I think state law requires is that, and federal principles require, is that following every census, every 10-year census, there be a redistricting, that the population of the various districts, in our case wards, be examined to determine whether they're of equal population anymore. And in this case, the wards were not of, you know, there were, there was a significant difference in the population in the various wards. So in order to equalize the population approximately in the wards, the ward lines were changed. And there were, basically, people moved, Ward Eight was bigger than the average, so people were moved from Ward Eight into Ward Nine, to equalize the population.
So how come from there and not from this way?
Well, you know, there was a group of people that worked on this. It was the former city clerk, Paul Bergeron, plus the then-city clerk, Sue Lovering, and, you know, they had census data, and they had all kinds of, I don't know why particular lines were moved in particular directions, but they came up with a plan that, look, this equalizes the wards approximately, and so that plan was adopted.
I didn't want to lose you, because we lost the park as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, late Skip Cleaver, Alderman Skip Cleaver, he was cut out of the ward too.
Yeah.
And so it wasn't done on any, you know, trying to get someone out of there, or it was just, that was the best way to get it to the 10, roughly 10,000 that each ward needed to make up the 90-plus thousand people we have. So it wasn't done anything other than looking at the wards and looking where they could cut to make it even with the way the wards were.
It's a harder job than you think.
It is, yeah, a lot goes into it.
Because you, you don't want to, like, divide, you know, one neighbor, you know, down the lot line. I mean, you've got to kind of move sections, so it's a harder job than you think. Now, Lori, you have anything you want to add?
No.
Well, Lori does a great job as president, so I really appreciate her coming, and she's been with a city alderman for a long time, and.
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years. So we're very lucky to have her. Derek does a great job. So we'll come back. If you have other questions or comments, talk to me or Jenny. You can always contact us at City Hall, and, you know, I just really appreciate your interest in our community and your willingness to come out and talk about what's going on.
If you didn't see the mayor's State of the City last night, you should watch it. It was very well done.